Hi, United States of America. To the republic of which stands, patients under God, individuals, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I see we're joined online by some people. And this time we have public comment. Is there anybody here who would like to speak and address the board?
Kim Walsh.
Hi, Kim. Please go ahead.
My name is Kim Walsh and I'm currently serving as Bolton's Lake Commissioner. And I'm coming to you tonight after a somewhat challenging, active and discouraging lake season. Lower Bolton Lake had an active algae bloom until just last week, actually. And I'm coming because I don't want to miss the opportunity for us to recognize that Bolton is going to need to put monies in its budget for lake management and monitoring going forward. So I wanted to put forth that formal request for the Board of Selectmen to include monies in their budgets going forward for those services to be provided. The town, I haven't come with this request recently because the town has had a $250,000 grant, steep grant, that we've been utilizing. And that grant expired on December 31st, 2020. So this is actually the first year that we're having to request monies in our own budget for those purposes. So I just, again, didn't want to miss the opportunity to do that. The grant has paid for those services since 2012. And I don't want those services to lapse at all. And based on this year's performance of the lake and the excessive rain and the algae that we experienced at Lower Bolton Lake, it's possible that we, in the near future, may be spending more on our lake management services than we have with grant monies in the past recent years. So that's going forward also. I have a couple of other things that I wanted to share with you all that we are working on and will work on in the winter months coming soon. I'm working with Jim, the Town of Vernon, and Friends of Bolton Lakes closely to put together a watershed management plan that will meet requirements so that we can file for federal funding with that watershed management plan. In order to get federal funding, you have to have a a tight watershed management plan. So we're currently working on that and we'll work on that to hopefully, potentially, file for grants as soon as December, late December of this year, for monies to be issued next year. We're also coming up on the expiration of our permits for treatment for Lower Bolton Lake. Those permits expire on December 31st of this year. That's a multi-year permit, so I wanted to make you all aware that we need to plan to submit to the DEP for permits for another multi-year permit application. And I would suggest that we apply for those permits sooner than later and use Hillary at NEAR, Northeast Aquatic Research, for assistance with those applications. She's been very helpful with them in the past and to confirm that we get those applications for both algaecide and herbicide treatments if they're needed in the future. And we also, Jim and I, talked at a recent meeting with Hillary that we need to review and revise the process that we use for communications when algae blooms occur. It was somewhat of a very confusing, 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 excuse me, and frustrating year as we experienced long-term and sporadic algae blooms at Lower Bolton Lake this year. We survived, but it wasn't pretty at times, is how I'll put it. Is that fair, Jim?
I'll agree. And our, and our Health District is committed to helping us improve those communications as well. So I think that's, you know, they're, they're certainly a key player as well as DEP and, you know, the volunteers of Friends of Bolton Lake and the Health District and Vernon and the players on that side of the town line. So it's, it's a lot of moving pieces.
There's a lot to coordinate and it gets extremely confusion, confusing when we don't know who has the authority, is how I'll say it, you know, who has, who's calling what shots. So, so yeah, so we need to fine tune that. And I'm committed to doing that as well because I play a very critical role in that process. Living here on the lake and seeing it on a day-to-day basis and also being a point person for lake residents. So I am definitely committed to improving that process. That's, that's what I had. I want to thank you, Jim, for helping us survive that tumultuous summer. We haven't had one like it and I've been doing this for a while. So the fact that we both survived is commendable.
Thank you. And you helped a lot. That's, it was a tremendous effort by everybody, so.
Kim, I'd like to say a thank you to you for continuing being the Lake Commissioner because your type of institutional memory for this has been just a gift. And certainly, I remember very clearly going after the dollars in 2012. And I, it's sad that we don't have those. Now, when you're talking about, if I might step back just a moment, talking about going after federal dollars after you get the watershed management plan going, is that something that the town would be able to look at for lake water management?
Yes. Those are funds available for that. And we're actually considering doing a multi-town approach to that. Jim and I met with Vernon and Hillary and the, and the group that will ultimately be doing the grant applications for those funds. And I think we kind of agreed, Jim, you can step in whenever you feel appropriate. But I think we agreed that it would be wise for us to do that as a multi-town with Vernon approach.
So you were looking at town, Coventry, Bolton, Vernon?
We are, but specifically for some funds, I think we will be just doing it with Vernon since Vernon is the, actually has the water for Lower Bolton, in Bolton's case.
Okay.
But yeah, the watershed management plan will be all four towns.
The plan would be, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I meant. I'm sorry.
Adam, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Well, thank you, Kim. Appreciate that very much. And Jim will be getting back to you.
Okay, great. Thank you all very much.
FYI, we normally have applied for the permits in January. So it's about that time.
It's, the timing is appropriate.
It takes the DEP a long time to do that kind of paperwork.
Beginning of January, we've applied so that we've been ready for whatever may occur in the spring.
Yeah, and we'll want them early. The curly pond weed that we didn't address this year in the fall, which we could, should have, would have, had we not been doing the algae so aggressively, will want to be an early season treatment in 2022.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else that's online want, wish to speak?
I don't see anyone.
All right. Thank you. All right. Let's quickly move on to the approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve November 9th?
So move.
And do I have a second?
It's either Bob or Mike. Okay. We're the only three. Great.
Yep. Very good. Okay, so then I will, is there, are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, let me call for the vote on approving the minutes for November 9th. All in favor? And all abstains?
I abstain.
And I abstain also, so two abstains. And so it's two in favor. We do not have.
Bob Di Pietro appears to be frozen.
I'll hold, then I'm going to hold the vote open until we hear from Bob on that. November 29th.
Thank you.
So three in favor, two abstain. Then November 23rd, do I have a motion to approve minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mike. And is there a second?
I'll second with a correction. If you go to page three of that
Yes.
minutes. I, it had me seconding my own motion and I don't think I did that. I think Bob Di Pietro seconded my motion.
Bob, we're on page 15 of the, of the packet, but it's page three of the motion of the minutes.
Thank you. For. Outside your order of your affair with this.
I'm having a hard time understanding. Bob, did you get that?
His internet is going in and out.
It sounds like your internet is picking up and then cutting out. Bob, can you raise your hand if you agree that you are probably the seconder? There we go. Thank you very much. So we'll put down Bob Di Pietro. Thank you, sir. Are there any other additions and corrections to the November 23rd special meeting? Hearing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Roll call votes. It'll take minutes better.
Very good. We'll do a roll call then. We'll start at that end of the table. Adam?
Aye.
Bob Moore?
Aye.
Bob Di Pietro, raise your hand. If you're in favor of the minutes.
He's frozen again.
You're frozen again, Bob, so we'll wait for that. And Mike Aramita?
Aye.
And I agree also. So we have, we're going to hold the vote open for the 23rd until we see a reaction from Bob Di Pietro's computer. And now we'll go on to the minutes of the 30th of November, the second special meeting. May I have a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll so move.
Can I have a second?
A second.
Thanks, Mike. Are there any additions or corrections to the 30th? Hearing none, then I'll call for the roll call vote. Adam?
Aye.
Bob Moore?
Aye.
Bob Di Pietro?
Aye.
Very good. And Mike Aramita?
Aye.
Thank you. And I, so we'll say it passes unanimously. Going back to the 23rd vote for Bob Di Pietro's vote.
Aye.
Very good. So unanimous for all three. At this time, I'd like to ask for the board's indulgence for us to move the agenda around because we have a guest with us tonight who will be speaking on new business for the Winter Fest. Mrs. Cordero, Karen Cordero is with us. Do I have an acceptance to be able to move her up to the top of the agenda right now?
Sure.
Yes.
Karen, for our, for our minutes, could we just state your?
Karen Cordero, 26, Lexington.
So somebody, who's that, Ron, could I ask you to mute your? There we go. Thank you, guys. Okay. Please proceed, Karen.
Okay, so I don't know if you guys got this from Kathy, but on Saturday, February 26th, 2022, there, I, the Bolton Land Trust would like to host a Winter Fest 2022 at Heritage Farm from 1 to 4. And what this would include is, first of all, just getting people together in the winter because it seems to be such a dull, dreary time. But I've been out there every day, no matter what the weather is, at Heritage Farm. And it's beautiful. And I cross-country skied and snowshoeed last year and it was just gorgeous. And so there's lots of different trails you can do. And now that they've mowed most of it, which, you know, it looks fantastic. There's so many different trails that you can explore. So snowshoeing, cross-country skiing, possibly sledding, which we, I mapped out to be in the front of the barn by the two maple trees going down the, into the field as opposed to in front where there's a huge rock wall at the bottom. So we don't want anybody doing that. And certainly, you know, once again, if there's no, a snowman building, if there isn't, we're still going to do it. We're going to hike instead. I'd like to have a fire. And I've spoken with both Bruce Dixon and Jim about where we could put the fire and how, you know, any of the, you know, things that we need in order to put out the fire and whatnot. So you guys might have questions for that. I asked about electricity because we, we would have some big, huge urns for hot water to serve hot and cold beverages, snacks, and have music, just to speaker maybe out there. And it's just a really fun afternoon to spend at Heritage Farm and, you know, get everybody outside in the winter. I spoke to Arlene Fiana. She is the Chair of Heritage Farm, the Heritage Farm Organization. She loves the idea and she approves. Bruce Dixon, I've spoken with, and Jim. We have deserted the site one to two weeks prior to where, prior to the event, just to make sure that the bonfire area is going to be safe. That's actually not a bonfire. We're not going to like pile it up eight feet. But I do have a ring that we can put down and we can just put wood in, right? So.
They're in a metal field. Nothing going to burn there.
I know, I know. But, but we just want to.
The biggest, biggest concern would be location and wind direction.
Right. And, and putting it out.
And not having people burn.
Right, right. Exactly.
Youngins really enjoy it and run sometimes.
They're making sure that we have, you know, water on site to put the fire.
Yeah, right, right. So, so Bruce did tell me that he was going to work something out or, and also I could bring huge Gatorade jugs and just fill them with water and put them on the side, just to get them. So, I mean, that's, that's another good idea. We, we were going to try to get some snowshoe rentals in, which is great. Otherwise, it's BYO, bring your own equipment. And we'd, we'd set up two tables, which Bolton Land Trust has. And we also would have a release of liability form, which Deb Livingston, who is our President of the Bolton Land Trust, checked our insurance and said sledding and all winter activities are covered under the insurance. So, but still the release of liability form, we'd have everybody sign. So, and then, and then the setup and takedown would be done by the Bolton Land Trust. So.
Did you consider parking in case this is such an exciting big hit?
Yes. Yeah. So in the summer, when they do their summer things, they do, you know, park along the side of the entrance going into. So, because we'll just have to address that with Deb, since she does the running stuff and see how they do. But I went up this summer because I taught aerobics up there. And when they had that, they actually did manage to do four rows of parking. So, yeah, it was really good. So they had two in the center and then two, and then one each on the side.
Is that area plowed, though?
Oh, it is. Yeah, because I cross-country skated every day last year. So, yes, it is plowed.
And did you think about porta potty?
I didn't. That's one thing I didn't, we didn't think about. I mean, one to four is three hours. I don't know.
Yeah, but if you have food on site, you might have to.
Food and beverage.
Yeah.
I don't know what the Health Department says.
Health Department might require it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it should be an assessable unit.
There's any place you can do skating there.
I'm sorry.
If there's anyone.
You can do skating there.
I know.
It'd be too bad.
I know. It'd be awesome. Okay, so I'll look into that. I know that the boosters did the porta potty for the summer running series.
Maybe you can find a sponsor.
Yeah. And since I'm on boosters. Okay, um, yeah. And so that's what we have.
Good. Are you working with any of the other organizations in town?
So I've talked to Stephanie, who is the rector. And she loves the idea. We just haven't sat down and gone, you know, with it yet. Like senior citizens or.
I didn't know of the Farm Commission, the seniors. It could be even the Fire Department, see if anybody else wants to participate.
Yeah.
Maybe get the high school students for volunteers. You know how to do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you know about them?
And, yeah.
I don't know. I mean, when does cross-country start? Please start.
So the indoor track would be going on then. But, you know, we do have 10 people on the Bolton Land Trust too. And they're, you know, everybody was like, oh, I'll do the parking. I'll do, you know, so that's, that's pretty cool. You know, it's just, it's going to be a, we're not necessarily going to mark trails, but, you know, we'll have guides that we'd go out with the people. And if we could cross-country or snowshoe, that would be awesome.
If you can, someone, when someone makes the first trail.
Right, right.
Would you, would you have a, an alternate date if we had a blizzard that day, per se?
Oh, let's go. No, the rain, rain is the only thing that I have. So we haven't really discussed an alternate date yet. I mean, Sat, you can't go with Sunday. If it, you know, I'm just thinking that a blizzard like that is going to happen for two days. So, so I don't, we haven't really discussed an alternate date, but if you want, we can certainly.
It may be something you want to consider.
Right, right.
Consider, is there anybody who does either ice sculpture or snow sculpture?
So I do think about that, yes. And I put some feelers out for people who, you know, may know somebody who can do that. And that would be really cool if they wanted to come up and demonstrate. That would be very cool.
I'm sure the Health Department have a coronary, but maple syrup on snow is always fun.
Oh, it is. Absolutely.
Coronary.
Especially the homemade stuff that people like Matt Reed makes. So.
That will not go over well.
Well, we could always do shaved, like the ice, shaved ice. So those are the, that's the plan.
Very good. And so as things get a little more firmed up, you'll come back to the town and we'll.
Absolutely.
We'll take those pieces. It's a very exciting thing to think about and we're glad.
I know. I'm excited. I mean, I think it's going to be more, like, as long as the weather is great and we have snow, that's what I'm banking on. But we will have activities for kids. You know, we might have like snowman rolling contests or if it's not a snowy day, then, you know, we'll do something in the way of contests and things like that. But a team, thank you. So.
Yeah, that's a tight enough time bracket.
Yeah, one to three, one to four. Yeah.
Are there any other questions for Mrs. Cordero? From anybody that's online, from the other board members, other board members? Very good.
I expect to see you, Mr. Aramita. Do you guys know of anybody that shaves ice or, I mean, a sculpts ice?
No.
No.
I wish I did.
Like Bruce Van Neely. I know that they have ice sculpture at Van Neely's and stuff, so maybe I could.
I was thinking of a plant called the Landolfi's because the food service, Rob might know somebody.
Thank you for taking the initiative and doing this. I think it's a great idea and.
Just give this something to do in the winter.
Well, it really does. And I think it could be the beginning of, of something that can grow.
Right. I agree.
Very good. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you very much. This is great. So we're going to go back now and we'll go back to join the agenda at number five for appointments. The Heritage Farm Commission. Jim, do you want to speak to that?
So the Heritage Farm Commission is completely full. We are not able to make any further appointments. There was an error in some bookkeeping with regard to that. And there was thought to be a vacancy for an alternate position, but there is not.
So maybe we could notify Mrs. Paul?
Mrs. Lynn.
Yeah, we, we've tried to reach her by phone and we're unable to do so. So Gary did send her an email this afternoon.
So if I might make a suggestion, she's a longtime resident, we do have other boards and missions with.
That's exactly what I said to Gary. I said, if we have somebody who's interested in serving, let's see if there's something else. So please send her a list of the vacancies we have and see if there's something that matches her interests.
At a future date, and there's an opening, we certainly slide it right over.
Absolutely.
Very good. And now we're going to look at the Fire Commission.
Right. So we have a, an interest form from Daniel Mulquann of Lordwood Drive, who was looking to become a member of the Fire Commission. And you have an interest form. And it tells you that he has a background in EMS, fire, and the security field and various certifications. He grew up here in Bolton and is a, is an active resident in town. And he's interested in serving on the Fire Commission because of his interest in public safety.
Are there any questions from the board members?
No.
Nope.
I believe that's the only one.
I think he'd make it, certainly remember, certainly has a background for it.
May I just ask the, the, how you usually proceed, Jim, on this? Is from your experience or Bob or Mike? Do we, does it come before the board this meeting and they get voted on the next meeting? Or can we vote on it this evening?
You can vote on it this evening or if you choose to.
Yep, yep.
Should I entertain a motion?
I'll move. I'll move to appoint Dan Mulquann to the Fire Commission. I will say that he's also a very, very well-trained mechanic. I think he's, the mechanic does all the diesel on the fresh removal trucks. So he's a good candidate down the road.
I have a second.
Thank you, Mike. Bob, do you have any other further comments?
No.
Anybody, any other board member want to comment?
I have no objection. I certainly would support it. But I think in general, when we get these interest forms, it wouldn't be a bad idea to email them to the Chair of the particular commission involved. Just courtesy. I don't want to hold this. That's a fair. Because they might have somebody in mind or might be recruiting somebody and might want to say, well, let's get that person to act up right away. Not that, again, this person might be somebody they recruited, probably, no, but generally more open. More open the process, the better, because if there's somebody who's been waiting and wanting to hopefully be appointed and just hasn't gotten their letter at, it might be.
Good point.
Do you like Bob Di Pietro to withdraw his motion and we wait till the next meeting?
Again, somebody who's interested, they, they spoke up. The, the person who shows initiative should be given consideration. I'm just talking about the process going forward. And I don't feel the need to hold up somebody who did express an interest. I just know that in some of the boards and commissions, you know, it takes a little convincing sometimes to get people who might be fantastic to come forward. And timing shouldn't be the reason that one person gets appointed rather than another. That's all.
Adam, I think that's a very good point. Also, the Chair of the Commission may have some previous knowledge. Might preclude a team spirit here. So I would be happy to go ahead and modify my motion to say something to affect that pending approval or consultation with the Chair of the Fire Commission would move forward other of those conditions. I think your point is well taken.
I didn't, I just want to be clear, I didn't mean to throw a spanner into the works for this particular nomination. I'm happy to go forward with it as it is. I don't think it's necessarily appropriate to create a new rule for somebody when they submitted their interest.
Bob, are you comfortable with keeping your original motion?
If I could. If I could.
I am.
Okay.
If I may, just a comment, I, I, I think the Chairman be, would be uh pleased with this particular candidate, just, just as a, a side.
Right, in fact, I'd, I'd rather not put a new rule to affect somebody, because it might imply that we have some concern about him, and I.
You're right.
Certainly didn't mean to have that learned. I just think that in general, that's a appropriate way to proceed for applications.
That's a good point.
I agree.
Very good, then I will call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 You need a roll call?
And I will uh tell the clerk, I hope that she accepts this, that it was unanimous vote.
There you go.
So we'll move on now to the Ethics Commission. So one of the things we found with the Ethics Commission was that the, some of the terms had expired.
Right.
And we needed to um look at that. Um, I believe there are two members left that still have active terms and.
What, what page is that? Those not on there, okay. That's why I couldn't find it.
So what we will be doing is coming forward, I hope, the next meeting with uh some names of people either who were on it and would like to be re-upped and or some others that will come forward with an interest form to be on the Ethics Commission.
There are five members total in that?
Yes.
Yep.
And has it met in the last?
It would, no, it hasn't met in quite a few years. I think it was two thousand seventeen, they did their, they did their initial.
No, they said they did their initial meeting and then developed their, their procedures and everything, which the selectmen then approved. And they only meet based upon request, so they haven't met since then. And, and I think we've, a couple of people. We will not. Yep, so.
But we'll take a look at that and we'll bring it back at the next meeting, so if you wanna take a look at it, if you have some ideas, uh, please uh contact Jim. And we'll work on that, bringing that to a uh up-to-date commission.
We, we don't have any people expressing interest yet.
Uh, not yet.
Is that?
Tim, do you have the uh member of the community or couldn't be a part of the.
Can't be a sitting member of a board, I believe.
I don't believe it can be an elected officer, I think it has to be uh someone from the community. It could be someone who has sat on a board, uh, from my understanding.
Yep, it was.
Prior.
Correct. It was structured so that no, no sitting member of a board can be a part of the Ethics Board.
And there are three vacancies.
I believe there are. So what we will do is um bring it back to the next meeting. We'll hopefully have a, a, a couple of applicants, at least to get this started. And I would like the board to consider that we asked the Ethics Commission to meet annually, just to perhaps go over if there's any law change, state law or federal law that they would have to review, or just to be able to put some eyes on each other and talk about maybe issues or cases that, that have come up in the state. So if there is comfortable with that, we'll move on. Uh, subcommittee reports, um, we're gonna wait until we get Jim back in here. Because we have those issues, um.
Oh, if I may, on our appointments, one thing I forgot to bring up at the last meeting, we uh is the reappointment uh to the alternate, alternate position on our Health District, which I currently, that's sit on that as an alternate. The term does expire in January, so. I got an email from the Health District today saying that, and so that, that's.
You, you wish to continue, Bob?
I would do it unless there's someone here who's really, Jim, unless Jim's got somebody in line ready to jump to be an alternate on the uh Health District. I'm, I'm currently the.
Yeah, right now, as far as I know, we have nobody that's expressed any interest whatsoever.
Alright, they don't mean.
So I've been, I've been attending the meetings, I've, you know, become a member of the Board of Directors.
Right.
And I'm on the Finance Committee for the Health District.
It's just, it's a position that's there, and I got an email from Millie that the term was expiring the end of the month. And I forgot to notify you earlier today, I apologize.
Can we make a motion tonight to reappoint him?
You can.
We can, it's not on the agenda, but, but it does fit under appointments, so if we, we would add.
You would have to add it as an agenda.
Agenda item D as an alternate to the Health District, and but, uh, Mike, I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we add a subsection D of appointments, and I would also make a motion that Bob be reappointed.
Uh, I don't think you can do that in one motion, but.
Okay, then I'll, I'll do the first one and then I'll wait.
Circle have a problem with that.
Yeah, you're right.
So would you make a motion to open the agenda?
Yeah, I made, I made a motion to add to the agenda.
Second that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Adam, as, as the second, and all in favor, please say aye.
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 And it's unanimous for the clerk?
And I'll make a motion now that uh we reappoint Bob.
A second?
I second that.
Thank you, Adam. Is there any other further discussion? If none, I call for a, a roll call. Oh, I won't roll call, we'll just, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have a unanimous vote?
Uh, Bob is.
His hand is up, Bob's hand is up.
Bob's, all Bob's accounted for.
Eight, eight years, I haven't had to attend a meeting, so.
Tells us.
No, but you, you, it's important to have that position, in case, you know.
Well, it's great positions. Uh, Jim, are you ready to do, go into some subcommittee reports?
So we really actually have no, these are placeholders on the agenda, but these subcommittees, properties and facilities and open space management acquisition have not met uh in some time, so there are no current reports from those committees.
That's a nice quick item.
I would like to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
I think it would be good for you, Jim, and Pam, and whoever's talking around the uh health building and facilities, come to the top committee to meet before the temporary building committee meets. So that we can help him with a charge that she's gonna have to give them at their first meeting.
Do you want me to comment?
Yes, please.
So Bob, their first meeting is scheduled for next week, and that's an organizational meeting, so they really won't conduct any business at that meeting.
Right.
But I think before their first regular meeting, after that, after they, you know, get organized, we certainly uh could meet and try to re- refine their direction and charge to give them that. In fact, you know, that was one of the questions that uh our first selectman asked me earlier today. You know, do we have a, do we have a mission statement essentially for that group? And, and I talked about the fact that, you know, we had discussed a specific charge in that, you know, we talked about the meeting at which you guys um had talked about having this very large scope of services for them to perform, and then narrowed it down to the two projects currently, which we're ready to move forward on and have a more defined scope, uh, which would be uh the Knott's Road Municipal Center and the project uh of an addition at the fire station.
So that's good, but therefore you feel that their mission is really assumed? Yeah, I personally like the idea of giving them their marching orders or mission beforehand. Because if I were going to be leading an organization, I would want to know what my marching orders were.
Absolutely.
And I, I, if I may, I, I, Bob, I concur with you on that. I, I think it's critical that um when, when we create these boards, that you're right, let's give them a defined mission that, what, what, what their charge is, rather than just let it kinda go off. Um, these, they have two very specific projects, but okay, just I think we, we should narrowly define what it is we want you to look at in those specific projects. And in, in probably a, a thirty-minute or so, uh, subcommittee meeting could discuss that, get it together.
We, we haven't created the subcommittee.
Well, I know that.
I was gonna.
There's that part of it, too.
I was gonna say, Madam Chair.
That was my, I, I was solely moving into that.
We all had the same thought, at least.
I was, I was flowing into that one, in that, um, obviously we have a, a whole new structure and, and uh, and it's, you know, they're gonna be creating.
Let me ask the question then, uh, for the former properties and facilities subcommittee. Did it include administration as well as board members?
It has not, it has not met since I came, stepped into this position. So Bob says, yes, I will.
Yeah, it was, it, it always did, and uh, it was three members, and generally, the first, the first selectman and two people who, who serve in that committee. Most of the committees were structured in that manner, so that the workload got split around between the various members of the board, with the first selectman being in, 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 head of all the subcommittees. And it's, that, that has been the structure for probably two decades.
So then I would ask at this point, uh, would the board consider, uh, I would ask for two volunteers and perhaps ask Mike to recuse himself because of the Fire Department uh, um, involvement that you have, would that be appropriate, Mike?
Uh, I, I, I say yes and also no, because I bring some information to it. But I can, I, it doesn't preclude me from coming to the meeting and express my opinion. So I, uh, I, I don't have a problem with that. I'll just be at the meeting to give whatever information I can to help.
Could I ask for two volunteers and to please be on the Properties and Facilities Subcommittee?
Before you do that, Madam Chair, may I ask, how many subcommittees will there be and what will they be? Or what have they traditionally been? My understanding is there should be a personnel committee.
Personnel, what is?
Is there a.
Finance committee.
Is there a transportation and, and highway?
Not to my knowledge.
Is there energy?
Well, we have a big category of public safety that covers, it's encompassing. The thing of this, you can, you, you can put whatever you want under the, the various categories. I think we, we only had at one time three operating, uh, one was, one was uh this one, which was uh properties and facilities report. Facilities, and we had personnel and finance.
And public safety.
And public safety.
So those three?
Yeah, those are the three.
Those are the three main ones.
Finance and personnel.
And, and within that, we were able to, yeah.
And Tim, I would like to see, Mike, even if he is not officially involved with the Fire Department, I think his background is such that he would be an excellent member of the committee, top committee, for all their projects personally.
I hear you, absolutely.
That's, that's true, and I, it, it, Bob, that's true for any member of, of a board on any of the subcommittees, and uh, I, I'll, I'll volunteer for that one as well.
For the properties and facilities? And may I have a second volunteer?
Adam, are you volunteering?
Bob, say again?
He's asking.
Volunteering.
Um, I wasn't planning to volunteer for that one, because I think I ought to be.
I already put him on personnel, because you know it yet, though?
I kinda thought that was the more appropriate place for me, but uh, Bob, if, if.
Would you take a temporary seat, Adam, on this?
Uh, on the facilities?
Or?
I suppose.
Serve on more.
Take it, take it three months.
You will have, you will end up serving on more than one subcommittee.
I'm sure I will.
But it's just, it's just the nature of the makeup on it.
I, I, I would do it temporarily, I'm not sure that I'm able to do it.
Understood. Uh, so while we're at it, uh, so, so I am the third member, if my understanding is correct. As the.
We agree, yes.
Well, I think at this time it is important, because of we, just starting out, we're getting these people on their feet, right? Uh, so sticking with this for a minute, um, we need to set up a time to meet uh before we have the first meeting of the temporary commission. When are they meeting, remember?
Wait, Adam, do you, you, you have any daytime slots?
I do have some day availability the next couple of weeks. I know, their meeting was sixteenth, you said?
The fourteenth to sixteenth, yeah, but.
You don't have it, uh, it's the fourteenth.
Oh, yes, it is, right. Well, that, that's just an organizational meeting, correct?
I don't think it has to be, I mean, maybe it would be nice, but I don't think it has to be before that meeting.
No, I don't either.
It really needs to be before the next meeting.
Right.
That's gonna be, but they have an eighteen-month window in their charge, correct?
Correct.
So they may be meeting more often than once a month. It's their call, how often they'd like to meet, correct?
Yes.
Um. Does anybody have availability on Friday?
This Friday?
Earlier in the day?
Not early, not in the morning, but in the afternoon at two or one, I do.
I, I can be available.
Alright, let's.
Or even, maybe even noon, but that might be cutting it. I have a quarter of a hour at nine.
Well.
Are you sure you're gonna be able to get out of there?
Well, try.
They, they allow two hours, so that's eleven, and then I get back to the, are we doing this remotely, or are we doing it?
We, I think we would do it remote.
Remotely, see, this way you're a lot easier.
So kinda anytime between that, uh, noon, twelve-thirty and three, I'm available.
Alright, why don't we try uh twelve-thirty?
Twelve-thirty.
Friday, the subcommittee to meet, and we'll meet remotely. And Jim, you'll notice that?
Yep.
Thank you for volunteering. I haven't broken anybody's arms yet, but while we're at it.
Is that volunteering?
Absolutely. Uh, personnel, uh, while we're at it, and we've got the personnel matter in front of us, um, and Adam has graciously volunteered to be on the subcommittee for personnel. Is there, is there anyone else who would like to volunteer to be on the Personnel Committee?
I would.
Hey, Bob?
Bob DePietre.
There you go.
Very good. And how about at the next meeting, we'll talk public safety?
Sure.
Alright, uh, open space management and acquisitions, or anything to add to that?
We have, we have nothing from that group.
Moving on to D then, FYI twenty-one budget report.
Which we all have in our package. And you wanna talk, Pam, or you want me to talk?
Um, we had a very insightful meeting today with the Finance Office. And we'll, we'll start, I think, Jim, if that's alright, before we get into the actual numbers. Uh, one of the things we talked about was, um, in trying to. put together the accounts payable. We have board approval necessary and one of the issues has been that delays because of when the, the invoices are coming in to be paid, it delays when the money's going out because they wait for us. So what we talked about today was having the supervisors request them to come back up their time for when they're going to request payment from beginning of the week to Thursday of the week before. And then that will give the finance department the time to put together, the board would then vote on it and we would be able to get the bills paid on time. It's very important to pay bills on time for those people that might know more about this than I do, but certainly it's for our credit rating and we don't want to fall behind. So one of the things we know is that we pay, we're paying bills every other week. So how are we going to do that as a board so that we don't slow down the payment process? So we were talking about having a second Zoom meeting for a quick sign off as the alternate to this, the usual board meeting. And so once a month, we would have the second quick Zoom meeting to just say aye or ask questions to the accounts payable. We could agree upon a day and a time and it could be a ten minute quick Zoom meeting. It would be posted and it would, I think, add more transparency.
Great. As long as the accounts payable list is posted with the agenda, I'm okay with that. My concern's been that, that I won't vote on anything that hasn't been posted publicly.
Right.
And do we need, how long do we need to have that posted publicly?
Probably forty-eight hours.
Would be the, would be the same requirement as for the agenda.
Okay.
It could be a standing meeting, so there would be.
That's the purpose of the meeting.
That's the purpose, and that's the only thing on the meeting. It would not be allowed, we wouldn't open it for anything else. It would be considered an accounts payable meeting.
So why don't we do the first and third Tuesdays? Our first Tuesday is our meeting and our third Tuesday would be that.
I don't understand this. Why do you have to have special meeting just to approve it? So are they actually due?
So there's, there's a, there's a couple of things, right? So we, we have, we have, we have a statute that says that the Board of Selectmen has to approve the accounts payable list. You know, that, that's part of your charge as selectman. And the other issue is the, so it used to be done after the bills were paid, which is not really the appropriate method. It really should be done before the checks are released for payment in case the Board of Selectmen or members of the public have questions or concerns about any of those payments. And when COVID hit, a, a process was set up whereby the selectmen were being sent the accounts payable list and asked to send an email to our, our finance department approving that list. And as Adam just brought to our attention a moment ago, the concern is that it, it lacks transparency and, you know, the kind of process that we really want to have for these issues. So the thought process is we do, you know, payroll every other week and on the odd weeks that we're not doing payroll, we're doing accounts payable. And if we can, you know, line up our accounts payable with our meetings and then just have a quick second meeting, we can accomplish the goals of being able to approve the bills before the checks get mailed. We can meet our statutory charge and we can do it in a way that's transparent and open to the public.
I think it's important because we are dealing with the taxpayers' dollar. And all of us on this board, I know, are very conscious of being good stewards of the money. And this makes it post-COVID, another, another method of doing it and trying to do it in a timely method so that we meet the statute, we get our bills paid early, further than they happen, and it helps our credit rating.
And if I may, add a, a specific time structure so that all our, everybody knows that these are when our bills are approved. Do business with us, you know, this is the way it happens. So this really eliminates a lot of those issues.
And, and you could have done that on a monthly schedule. I mean, you could, you could put that in every contract and say the town issues bills, you know, the third week or the second week of each month, get your bill in before the first or it doesn't get paid and every contract says that.
Yeah, you do have some, but there's a lot of these things are like one-time things and whatever, but I, I, I really, I think it adds that, here it is, here's, here's the structure. You can, everybody can work within that structure.
My raising of this really was that we were presented with a list of checks. Fifty hundred checks. Now, I'm not an auditor. I don't have the ability to audit.
Right.
So I'm not gonna approve a check as an individual signing off on it. If we're presenting it as a group, it's a meeting, it's a public agenda.
Right.
And just like the state has an open checkbook, the town should have an open checkbook. If the citizen wants to see what, what bills we paid that week, who we wrote checks to, they should be able to do that easily. And if we're doing it on an agenda and it's, it's, it's appended to the agenda, then they can have that transparency.
Mike has handed up.
I also have had, since we've been doing this, several questions and it's extremely difficult via email to text back and forth questions prior to getting my approval, so to speak. And I'd much rather be able to ask them of Jim at a meeting like this, you know, even it's a short meeting, I've got two or three questions, it'd be over and nothing flat rather than back and forth, back and forth, back and forth where the people don't see it either. So I, I think it'd be a good thing to just meet quickly once a month or the second time in the month to, to go over the bills.
I don't believe we need a motion, but I would like to ask if there's a consensus that we will have a second meeting, a very short one, and that we would at least need three out of five members to be in attendance and it could be on a regular basis. We can work on that and come up with a date and a time that works for the most amount of people. And we would do it on, hopefully, a very rapid pace. Is there anyone else who has any more comments? Okay, we'll get back to you on that one. So at this time, Jimmy, you want to talk about the rest of the budget? Sure. If there's anything specific you want to bring up.
So again, you know, we did meet with the finance department today and we went over the current fiscal report and, you know, we, we do recognize that, you know, if you look at the percentage of the fund that was expensed in each of these items, you know, some of them are higher than others, but looking at this and comparing it to past trends, you know, some things get, like property insurance is one that sticks out as, you know, being sixty percent expensed and we're not even fifty percent of the way through the fiscal year. But, but that's one that's paid heavily up at the front of the, at the beginning of the fiscal year. And so when we look at this, we look to make sure that we're really in the right place with regard to spending for the year and we, we truly, we truly are in the right place. There's nothing that's giving us any red flags at the moment. You know, and things like, you know, highways and streets, there are certain times of year where we're doing paving. So those expenses get high at certain times of the year and then, you know, we might, you know, make a large purchase of salt and sand during the winter. You know, so there are things that ebb and flow with regard to our expenses. But we did, again, we did go over this in great detail with the finance department today. And, and we don't feel that there are any red flags in this budget where we have to be looking at transfers or finding ways to find additional funds for something.
I did a question under expensed column, the percentage, where there were zero, zero. And so I was told that, say, under auditing and probate and the animal control officer, that they were one-time payments and they just haven't come due yet. So we have the money budgeted and then they, they will be expended shortly.
What is the encumbrance column?
So like a lot of times when we, when we have, a lot of times what she'll encumber is payroll, for instance. So we know under a certain account that X amount of dollars of that account are for payroll. While we might not have spent all of that payroll money, it usually, it usually happens more toward the end of the fiscal year in the third and fourth quarter, you know, she'll start encumbering those funds that we know are allocated so that it gives us a better picture of what our balance is in each of those line items.
Are there any other questions?
And then we also have a, a report of collections from the tax collector. And again, you know, this is, we're, we're doing very well for this, for this fiscal year. We're at ninety-six point eight-nine percent, percentage of collected for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And as you might recall, our we, we sent original tax bills out that the last year's mill rate, so there's a supplemental bill. Many of our residents chose to pay their entire balance. And so our collections are higher than they might otherwise be this time of year, but supplemental billing is going out. And we, we should see that percentage increase in the next couple of months.
I did ask a question on the lower part of the chart where it talks about seven thirteen, twenty twenty-one, and it only says nineteen percent, nineteen point zero seven percent. And that seemed to be quite out of line. And she said, remember that we hadn't passed the budget. It took four times and so that is why it was a delayed and why you see such a, a jump on August thirty-first.
Do we have any questions on the elections report? Great.
Do we have to vote on the accounts payable tonight?
Maybe it's further down on the agenda, hunter new business.
Would it be all right if I just bring that up since we're talking money? So we have the accounts payable. And I would take a motion to put forward that we approve the bills to be paid.
Don't think it's in paper copy.
That was email, was that an email?
That was emailed to us.
It was emailed to you separately.
Yeah.
I don't believe it was posted with the agenda.
I had reviewed that. That's an email. That's the one that was emailed, correct?
Yes.
I had reviewed it, so I'm.
Yes.
I'll, I'll move the approval of, of the with, with payments. Thank you.
Do I have a second? I'm looking for a second, going once.
Second.
Thanks, Mike.
Man in the background.
Oh, see, we can't see that.
Yeah, and it's just enough angle on the computer.
I'll have to talk louder.
Your hand doesn't say much, Mike.
No. I said, yes.
Are there any comments? I think none. I'll, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Abstain, Madam Chair.
And we will make sure that they're part of the agenda.
So the, so, so the record reflects for in favor and with Adam, color abstaining. Moving on to number seven, ongoing business, consider possible action on alcohol and cannabis ordinance. Jim, would you like to address it?
So we included for, so the, the board, the board, some of which is still here with us, did work quite hard on an alcohol and cannabis ordinance. Currently, we have an alcohol policy. We did receive some public comment and Bob and Mike and Bob, if you can help me remember, my recollection is that the comments that we got from the public is they thought that you guys had done a very good job crafting this ordinance, that it was enforceable. But that in fact, it should be an ordinance rather than a policy. We got feedback from the town attorney after sending it to him. You did revise the ordinance based on his feedback. And at this point in time, it, it has not been adopted as an ordinance. We've included in your package under, which is on page twenty-five, item seven A, the process, and this was provided to us by the town clerk, by which we would follow to adopt that ordinance. And so I think at this point, you know, that, that really is where you're at in this process.
So at this time, if my understanding is correct, we would be looking to take this to public hearing?
Correct. At times when we, when we, we've done this, we, we incorporated as, as the same day as our selectman's meeting. So that it would be the first item would be, not the selectman, the first thing would be the public hearing added adjourned and then go on to the selectmen. So this, we're gonna be having two selectmen, well.
Well, one's gonna be a special meeting, right?
Yeah, that.
And be very short.
Yeah.
I think it's, we, we could go to January's meeting with this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it's super pressing. I don't see any reason why I couldn't wait till January.
Right.
So we have a special meeting before the January meeting?
Yep.
Public hearing?
Public hearing, I'm sorry, wrong words.
January.
I have January fourth as the, the next meeting. Is that whatever else has on their agenda? Do you think that's too close to the new year? Do you think we should bump it to February?
No.
So it's more.
I, I don't see tons and tons of public comment, but if it is, it is.
This been on the agenda at least four times.
Oh, yeah. There's not anything new. But, you know, everybody's around in January and then obviously, since we're, since we're doing these blended meetings and, and you know, everybody can sit in the comfort of their fireplace and, and participate in, in the meeting.
So we had, had, we had, Jim, Jim and I had spoken before because of possible inclement weather for the January and February. If the board would consider having virtual meetings for those two months for the board meeting, just to make it easier for snow situations or other type of storminess. So we, if we look at the fourth, we could have the public hearing to start and seven, maybe, and have the board meeting start at seven thirty. And we would open it and recess it to continue the public hearing if it were to run over and delay the opening of the Board of Selectmen's meeting. Do I have consensus that we would have the public hearing on the fourth?
My feeling.
Will you motion to? To put it on?
I think you have to have a motion.
I agree.
And that's, we're talking about January fourth.
Yeah.
May I have a motion then to, would someone make a motion to have the public hearing on the fourth?
The fourth.
At seven o'clock?
Yeah, on the fourth at seven o'clock.
At the town hall or virtually.
Well, two, if it's gonna be virtual, we'll do that. Public hearing virtually, we.
You're, I think your motion would be as a virtual meeting.
Have a virtual meeting. Have a virtual meeting. And from, from, from seven
Until completion.
Seven thirty.
Well.
We have to leave it open. That's, that's just the motion, simply a, a, you know, a virtual meeting at January fourth at seven.
On this proposed policy.
On the proposed
Marijuana.
Marijuana.
Ordinance.
Ordinance. Thank you.
A second, please.
Second. Oh, Adam, you want to do it? Go ahead. You already did.
Yeah.
You sneaked the lose in this game.
Then I'll ask for a, a vote and we'll, this one we will do by roll call. Adam?
Aye.
Aye, Mike, Mike?
Aye.
Up. Bob Moore?
Aye.
And myself, so it's unanimous. And what we will do is we will, Mr. Administrator, we will have the board meeting and we'll open and close it to start at seven because I know you need to notice it. And we will recess it until the end of the public hearing. Moving right along. Report on the budget transfers.
So we have one budget transfer request this evening to move four hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-eight cents from the category of professional and educational training to advertising to cover the cost of the election warning. Due to the, you know, number of questions on the ballot, made the the call much more expensive than was budgeted for.
I have a question, Jim. Do we have any statistics that show the current is more prevalent or popular than the J I?
I'm not sure I understood the question, Bob.
I'm not sure either.
I think he's asking, Bob, if I might help, I, I think he's asking for the, the cost when we go out.
With the current versus J I.
The current or the J I and which one has more readability in town?
Which one is cheaper?
I mean, I think both, both of them have significant circulation in town and, and qualify. And we, annually, we check to see which one is the least expensive. And, you know, typically that is what we go with, is, is what is going to, you know, give us the circulation at the most appropriate cost.
Thank you.
The legislature has not approved the number, numerous attempts by municipalities to allow it to go out on, on, on the internet. Say tens of thousands of dollars.
The newspapers fight it every time.
Right.
Okay, so. Okay, so we got to vote on this. So all in favor, say aye.
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 With the motion. A discussion on the draft charter revision. Did I just start that off?
We're, we're almost done. So, you know, there were a number of, as, as everybody knows, you know, at the, at the November polls, there were a series of questions regarding the charter revision. And it's very clear to everybody that a, a great job was done by the, the group that worked on this revision. And some things passed and some things did not. And during her last days in office, you know, former first selectman Sandy Pierog directed us to forward those changes to Attorney Rich Roberts, who had helped us on the administrative side with this process. And he made a, he incorporated those changes into the document that had been provided to us by the Charter Revision Commission. And that has been forwarded to the town attorney, Rich Barker, and he has reviewed it. And his office has made a couple of pretty minor changes. And we have sent that back over to Attorney Rich Roberts to incorporate those final changes. Once those are done, we have to file that with the Secretary of State and the Town Court Office. And we will certainly post it on the town's website. And any of our members of Board of Selectmen who would like to have a hard copy, we will certainly make sure that you get hard copies of that. So we are, we're really on track to, you know, we, we, we're, we're days away from getting this completed. And it's a lot of hard work by a lot of people. And I, I just want to say that it was a job well done and I thank all of those that, you know, served on the committee and the Board of Selectmen and everybody that really put their best foot forward for this. It was a tremendous task and it was well done.
I'd like to add to that, too, that it was very laudable and to the former first selectwoman that was doing her part on this as well. And we look forward to having it come forward and we, since we have one of the members of the commission here on now on the board, look forward to having him describe some of the pieces that are more difficult or the bigger changes that are perhaps not as obvious. So we can move on now to the South Road truck traffic. There has been a discussion on South Road for a couple of things. One has been speeding and one has been truck traffic. We do have a, a new business on forty-four and there had been some very obvious, very large eighteen-wheelers going up and down South Road. And I would just like to thank Jim for, for stepping forward and taking that in hand and making calls to the company. And those have stopped from, from what I have been able to witness myself. We do have other trucks, though, that use it on a regular basis. And we have found that if we can get the name off the truck and you make the calls and ask them not to do it, it does stop it for a while anyway. But there have been other trucks that use it that are unmarked and they're very large. What we know is that this is a small road and it has, it's a, I don't want to say it's an antique road, but it has a small San Andreas fault that runs down through part of it as Mr. Dimick will describe it. And it's not quite, it's not built for eighteen-wheelers really to be used on a regular basis. At the bottom of the road, it does ask for no-through trucks. And when it was reached out to the state, the Office of State Traffic Administration, the S T A, they have a guidance for local traffic authorities. It is in your packet on page twenty-nine. And it gives you traffic control signing options that you're allowed to use by state permit. So Bolton does not have the authority to actually ban trucks from that particular road. And we already have put down no-through trucks. Jim, you want to add to that?
You know, so I think, you know, we, we do have a, a group of residents that I hear from on a somewhat regular basis who reside on South Road that are not pleased about the fact that, you know, trucks continue to use the street even though, you know, we, we request that they don't use the street. We, we've explained to them that this is not under the authority and jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen. It, it is under the jurisdiction of the Office of the State Traffic Administration that we cannot make that decision as a local traffic authority. However, if, if the Board of Selectmen felt that it was an important enough issue and they wished to try to ban truck traffic, we could make that request to the Office of the State Traffic Administration on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. I'm told from our town engineer that these kinds of requests are, are very seldom approved.
They're almost never.
Almost never.
This is, I take it between people who are, are trucks that are cutting between Route Six.
Route Six and forty-four.
So there are a couple of options, seems to me. One is put one or more stop signs at intersections along Route, or, of, along South Road because there must be some side roads where you could put a stop sign.
They are, there's one already at Stony.
Yeah.
Which is regularly ignored. But it is, it used to be a yield sign. And so we have others that would like it still be a yield sign, but it's not. Further up on the straightaway, we have Stonehedge, Hedge, and we have Fernwood that do not line up. And not a, so it doesn't make a, a perfect crossing. So we have two Ts, that one's left and one's right. And that's something we could, we could talk about.
You could put stop signs in, in opposite directions as people enter those. You can also put speed bumps, which trucks would generally prefer not to.
True fact.
As, as the local residents also.
Well, they can't have it ever. They can't have it all.
We do have a speeding issue on the straightaway and certainly on the downhill.
The advantage of the stop signs at some of those side roads is that if it becomes a problem that trucks don't obey them, first of all, it slows down the trucks and quiets them a little bit. But second of all, if they don't obey them, you know, he's asked the trooper to sit at them a couple of times. A speeding ticket for a truck driver is a big deal.
It is.
Stop sign violation for a truck driver is a big deal. Costs them hundreds of dollars. They off, they have a real problem if they get a stop sign.
And also if you have a C D L.
Well, they all have C D Ls, so they can't take a, they can't take a moving violation.
Particularly that one.
So they will stop at a stop sign.
Oh, yeah.
Because if they don't, they know that it's, especially in the residential neighborhood, they will stop. And then they'll use that route less because it's not, it's no longer such a big time saver for them.
Would the board like the resident state troopers to look at?
Increasing patrols there, yes.
Traffic calming or for stop signage?
So I, I can't, Mike, to your point, I can tell you that based on the concerns of residents, our resident state troopers have spent quite a bit of time out there doing traffic enforcement. And unfortunately, the folks that they're catching are people who are residents of South Road.
Oh, oops.
They will.
And so when we took that one step further, they actually, we actually, when somebody would call me and say, hey, you know, look, I really want you to do something about the speeding in the trucks on South Road. I would say, well, gee, there's not a lot of safe places for our resident troopers to sit out there. Do you mind if they sit in your driveway? And so we got permission from a couple of different residents for our troopers to sit in their driveways and, and perform, you know, that traffic service. And so, you know, the report that I got back from our resident troopers is that they gave out several warnings to residents of Bolton and mostly residents of South Road.
If, if I may, put this in, in historic content?
Yes.
Had the same thing twice in twenty years. We have the same issue with the same results. I mean, it's not the, it's really not the issue of truck speeding. This, the speeding is generally motorist. And, and unfortunately, it has, you know.
The trucks use the road, but I think it's too steep and too windy for them to speed.
Way too windy a, a, a road, other than the straightaway.
It's the noise of the, of the brakes.
Well, it's all, the brake drives it nuts.
Right.
Right.
Well, any windy road or road where they.
You can put every stop sign you want. You're not going to eliminate that. That's the issue.
No, what you're going to do is discourage them from using it.
And that's one of the purposes, you know, we're talking about a fully loaded dump truck. And you're looking at a, a road that's, you really don't want to have to replace anytime soon. But the, also the, the speeding coming down that hill is, is scary because of the hard curve.
Well, that's a dangerous ninety.
There's a tough curve at the bottom.
It's a dangerous ninety-degree pitch wrong way turn. For any, for, for the speed limit.
With a drop-off on the outside of the curve.
Right.
Into, into the river.
Right.
On the lower part.
So what your suggestion is have our trooper look at it, perhaps give us some, some feedback.
For traffic calming.
As to some calming, you know, I think it's a good idea.
I mean, that's really the only choice we have because we can't, there, there's no way the state is going to.
They will never do that.
They're never going to let you prohibit trucks.
So with.
Will they allow, are we allowed to adjust the speed limit?
It's already twenty-five.
It's already, it's not the speed limit, that's the problem.
Mike, did you hear that? It's twenty-five now?
Speed limits on public roads are also taken care of by the Office of the State Traffic Administration.
Yeah, that was.
That is, that is not a local traffic authority issue.
Right.
With consensus then of the board, we will ask the resident state troopers to take a look at that and, and come back to us hopefully by February. And we'll revisit this in February.
And should we think of moving our electronic sign there?
That could be one of the recommendations, yep.
Yep.
It might at least get somebody's attention. The speed, you know, when this has your, your speed.
We have, we have two of them. And I, I can't remember, do you remember where they're deployed, Bob? One's on.
One right now is on Notch Road.
Notch Road is the, the other ones, is it Vernon or Quarry?
Quarry.
Quarry.
Yep.
Thank you, Kim.
Can we borrow it?
No. If, if I had, if I had an option, I'd have you put it on Vernon.
Do, do, I mean, Kim, you're out that way. Did you, do you see it actually helping?
I think that it does, honestly. Um, but I, I think it's just a townwide issue, to be honest, you know, probably region-wide issue.
It's, it, it's a statewide issue.
It's statewide, and it's been exacerbated post, from COVID time. And people had.
Have no.
Used to be quiet, yeah.
Bad foot and with, with less traffic.
Yeah, and the roads you're referring to are small roads, like our roads here. Both Quarry and Vernon Road are very small, narrow roads and can't tolerate that kind of stuff very easily.
Very good. So we'll look forward to, to revisiting this in February. Could I move on now to item E, purchase of the engine tanker? Jim, you want to talk on that?
So, you know, we, we have a request from the fire department since our residents acted at the most recent vote to approve the purchase of the engine tank. The fire department has asked that we consider working together in getting that truck ordered by the end of December, at, at which time they expect a, a price increase, I believe, of about one and a half percent, which on the amount of money we're talking is not insignificant. They propose that we use H G A C purchasing services to purchase this through, which is akin to purchasing off the state bid list in a recent conversation with the folks from the federal government that are, are, are helping us to purchase the brush truck through a grant. You know, they're, they're telling us that H G A C is a really great program. So the, we, we do have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars currently budgeted for the purchase of the truck. We don't have the funding mechanism in place for the balance of the purchase as yet. But it would not be unprecedented for the Board of Selectmen to recommend moving forward with the purchase of the engine tank and find that funding mechanism at a later date. We're looking at, please help me here, Mike, with the timeline. If we were to order it in December, when would be looking at delivery?
At, at least next December. Probably into the following, beginning of the following year. We're looking at between twelve and fourteen months.
And Mike, refresh our memory, were, were we not told that the sooner we got it, the, we would beat some of the price increases? Is that correct?
Right. I believe there's going to be a five percent price increase. If not at the first of the year, I thought it would be shortly after the first of the year.
Uh, if not at the first of the year, I thought it would be shortly after the first of the year. And that's a significant amount when you're looking at an eight hundred thousand dollar vehicle. Uh, there are a few other incentives to make it worthwhile for us to go forward on a a quicker basis. And, uh, like Jim said, HGAC is, uh, i- is, the, the, the federal government, F FEMA thinks it's a good, uh, good way to go. Uh, and they have no problem with us using it for the brush truck because they think it's appropriate. Uh, and that would be the same thing for the engine. Uh, you know, I think, uh, you know, with, with the problems we've had with the other truck and, you know, we, uh, we'd like to keep it when it's done, but we only want to keep it with the, uh, caveat that it stays running. And, uh, you know, we're dealing with a thirty-year-old truck and I don't think we should. I, I, I don't think that we should procrastinate in buying it mostly because of the price increases.
I'm sorry, Mike.
Uh, I was just gonna say that the, the people on the committee have been working on the, uh, specifications and comparison to different, uh, manufacturers now for about nine months and have, uh, viewed numerous other manufacturers and other models and, and compared specifications. And I, I think there, uh, I haven't sat on the committee, uh, although I did sit on the final overview of it, uh, I, I think they've picked out a fantastic truck which will last the town of Bolton for at least thirty years.
It's what DePietro would like to be recognized.
Uh, DePietro, sir?
Yes, Pam, before we move delay, I would like to make the motion that we proceed with making this recommendation to purchase this truck.
Bob DePietro has put the motion on the table. Do I have a second?
I'm gonna second it for a purpose of discussion because I have some questions.
Absolutely. Uh, we have a second, Bob Mora, uh, and your questions, Bob?
Is this the same, uh, I believe, if I'm not wrong, the Board of Education uses the same, uh, bid process for.
Board of Education, I believe, has or does, uh, currently use HGAC for some of their purchasing.
Right. I, I think they've used that for a while, in my understanding.
Yes.
And the reason why they did it was simply they got the best buy for their, for their dollar. To me, that's what they're looking at. I am not a fan of not bidding, uh, a, uh, a process, but we've been involved in both ways. Purchased, uh, equipment using what's called the state, virtually the state bid, it's, it's, it's a bid process. And, uh, where, you know, the pool is huge and you get the best, you, you do get the best deal. And I want, I believe this is a similar type situation. I'm not sure. And I have to, that's why I'm asking the question. I don't know if someone can answer that. If Mike, you could answer that or?
Yeah, but.
That is correct. Okay.
Yeah, it, it is very similar to the way the bid, uh, the state bid operates. Uh, this company, it's, uh, it's an entity which, uh, solicits bids for, uh, all kinds of things from pencils to, uh, to fire trucks and, uh, they bid a basic fire truck and then you, they have, uh, bids for the additional options. So you, when you bid through them, you bid the truck, you bid the options, or you, you specify the options and they give you the bid price. Uh, when dealing with at least one of the manufacturers, I asked them, would we save money if we went out to bid? And he guaranteed me that the bid would at least be one and a half percent higher than HGAC's price because that's what's negotiated with HGAC, so, uh, you know, I, 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 I don't see a lose in this in any way. And it's the thing of the future. Uh, there's, uh, two or three other buying cooperatives. In fact, one of the, uh, companies that were looking for the skid unit, the, the pumping and tank unit for the, the brush truck goes with a different uh, consortium that's out of Seattle. And right now we're checking to see if they're, uh, part of HGAC as well. You know, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's the way of the future, I, I think.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's one faith beyond the financial to call this group. I'm more concerned about the kicking the can down the road. God forbid, if anything happens beforehand, before we get this new unit with volunteer firemen, some of whom are pretty young, pretty, uh, pretty inexperienced. I'm worried about the liability more than I am about finance. That is a legitimate concern of finance, I understand. But I'm very, very concerned that we don't kick the can down the road and risk a bigger credit potentially by waiting to get a more current, safer, more useful volunteer fireman truck. That's why I'm full out of it. I researched this on, I discussed it with my oldest son, as you know. He was a commander in Manchester and a fire chief assistant. And, um, I'm very, very much in favor of moving forward on this as soon as we can.
Thank you, Bob. Adam?
I just have two questions. One, uh, I assume that HGAC is a private entity? And do they charge a commission for the service or a fee?
Mike, did you hear the question?
Yes, uh, I believe they are, uh, their fee comes from the manufacturer, I believe. Uh, they are, uh, like, like Jim said, when, when we were on the phone with FEMA, uh, we asked that question, you know, are they acceptable to the federal government? And they came very highly recommended by FEMA as a way to purchase vehicles, so.
I believe there, I believe there may be a membership cost to offer, right?
Right. I, I, I think we have to join and I don't remember what the cost was. It's not super significant, but it, uh, it will allow us to do other purchases. You know, we, uh, we can use it for, uh, town, uh, dump trucks and, and pickup trucks and and stationary, I believe, even all, all kinds of things we can, we can bid through them. It gives us uh, access to a very large buying consortium.
I think we should ask the schools if we can use their Netflix platform password.
Hey, if they, if they're, if they're, if they're a membership, if that's.
Well, I, number, number one for me is the town voted to approve this purchase and we should just implement what the voters agreed to do. And number two, there's absolutely no reason to wait to order a piece of equipment this large. So we should go ahead and do it with the, with the parameters that we've discussed. If we have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars available to, to put down, then we should say, go ahead and put that out there and we'll figure out the way to fund the rest that the voters have authorized.
Thank you. Jim, do you want to add anything to that?
I, I think you've covered it all.
Then I will ca- call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. The vote is unanimous and it will be moved forward. Thank you all. We have number F, it says other. Jim, do you have something to add to this?
I don't.
Then we'll move on to new business. Consider and act on the election of the deputy first selectman. I would entertain a motion for, uh, a, a name to be put forward for the deputy first selectman.
I move, uh, we nominate Bob Mora for deputy first selectman.
I have a second, please.
I will second my own nomination.
Bob DePietro did it.
Oh, oh, it's a Bob thing?
It's a Bob thing.
I don't know here, Adam. It's not looking good for us. Very good, very good. Uh, then it, is there any discussion? That call for a vote, all in favor of Bob Mora being deputy first selectman, please say aye.
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 Let's, let the record note that it was unanimous. Let's consider an act upon the budget workshop dates that is, is, are in your packets. This is.
Page thirty-one.
Page thirty-one, thank you. We have January eleventh, January thirteenth, January twenty-fifth, January twenty-seventh, February third, and February eighth.
Wow.
It's hit the wow.
This is, this is, this is consistent with, with past years.
Yeah.
We, we, we use those, you know, not, not having the, uh, personal experience of living through all of these, just one a year myself, um. We looked at, you know, what we had done in the past and this is very consistent with what we've done in the past.
Yeah, if I may, what, it, it allows. If something runs long, it allows us to, enough meeting time to deal with it. Most times, we were, we were done prior. We just, it was a matter of formulating the, the final results more than, than getting the input from, from various boards and members. It, the difficulty is how, how to crunch the numbers to go forward. And I think that, that I know Mike and Bob, you can concur, that, that, that really becomes the, the hard part and the real time consuming part.
Yes.
Can I ask, what we're in finance, Phil exists, right?
What was the question? Yes, it does, uh, it, that does not take effect for two years. The, the changes in the charter, that's what you're referring to, Bob?
No, I'm concerned about the fact that they are going to have to meet Phil with the various departments to go over the same, uh, information that we are inside, right?
I don't remember as a department have ever meeting directly with the Board of Finance.
No.
I, I've only ever met with the Board of Selectmen. So I don't think the department heads are meeting with the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance is reviewing the information that um, that the Board of Selectmen are putting together through the budget workshops.
Hey, we, we as a Board of Selectmen defend the budget or justify the budget to the Board of Finance.
And, and we have always invited, uh, members of the board, the chair, whomever, to sit in all of the deliberations that we had when we, when we bring the various agencies in to discuss their budget so that so that, you know, the, the agencies can, can present their, not only their budget to us, but also to the, uh, whatever members of the Board of Finance wish, wish to be there to attend.
Yeah, they're there to, to ask question, or to answer questions mostly.
Hmm, okay.
All right, then we'll move on. Was there any further questions? Um, we did the winter fest already, we did the AP detail list, so now the discussion is possible in new commissions. There are two that are on the proposed list for tonight to discuss, and one is a cemetery commission and one is a veterans' commission. Um, as you know, we've dealt with the new contracts with the cemeteries and so it would be, the concept would be to have a three or five member, uh, commission. That would be the eyes and the ears for the town, uh, to watch over the cemeteries, to come up with, uh, perhaps plans for the future, um, to do some due diligence if there, there are things that need to be changed. Um, the second one was the, we'll start with that. So the cemetery commission. Is there, uh, any discussion, anybody want to talk about that? And you have any, any ideas, uh, pro or con?
I.
Mike?
Uh, you know, while I like the idea of a cemetery commission to oversee the cemeteries, I, I almost believe that the head of the park slash pub, you know, eventually Public Works, uh, is more than capable of overseeing the uh, subcontractors that we have working on it. Uh, you know, as far as the veterans' commission, that's a whole different thing. You know, I, uh, I, I, I'm in favor of that, you know, making sure that the veterans are, are, uh, taken care of in our cemeteries and and other functions around town. But I kind of think that the cemeteries should fall under the parks department and, uh, uh, be evaluated by them. Town staff is probably, uh, has the time and, uh, the expertise to tell if it's being done correctly.
Well, in response to that, I concur that we have, uh, very competent staff to do that, but they're also, also, also I believe they are stretched thin. Um, one of the things that I've witnessed in, in talking with people who have been at the cemetery.
Yeah, Jim for one.
Jim for one and, uh, two other, uh, ladies that I recently spoke to. They thought that there was, uh, a need for beautification. Uh, they looked at the, the back of it, looking at the bittersweet that has grown up on the chain link fence. Uh, that there is really no closure at the end of the, um, cemetery. And that, uh, perhaps a small stone wall along the base would be, um, be, along the backside would be very attractive. Uh, there's also the issue of a replacement flagpole needed at the Quarryville Cemetery. It could, it could be a short-term, uh, uh, committee. We could try it for, for, uh, two years or eighteen months and we could decide whether or not we want to, uh, re-up it. But I think it would allow for members of the community to step forward and, um, add to the pride and respect to be given to our cemeteries, uh, that have in large part had a rough go of it over the last ten years.
If I may, we, we, in the past, we, we have created, uh, what our, in fact, short-term committees, commissions, whatever, with specific purpose. This is kind of sounds like what, what we're looking at here. And, uh, if we were to do this for, I think initially, a short period of time to look at, it's like, as Bob DePietro indicated earlier, you have to give them a specific charge of what you want to do. And looking at, to me, if I were doing it, because I had the same issue way back when, is, all right, look at these cemeteries, what, what, what do they need? And, and that, you know, one can visually say that, but also a lot of people who, who have utilized it, and I don't mean those who are buried there, those who come and back and forth to the cemetery, they have comments on it and there are things that they might have suggestions that could be, that we, that could be improved upon, both of the cemeteries. And as we found out at our last meeting, there are, you know, the cemeteries are, are properly funded. So if there are things that should be done and needed to be done, um, if you have a small group, that's their charge, examine it, meet with folks and come back, report to us at a specific time. Uh, what their recommendations would be if, or any, what they would think would be needed improvements or what, what's working and what's not working.
Use of the, use of the fund. I'm, I'm sort of questioning what has been done over the past few years since the town took over the cemeteries? Who's been responsible for that oversight and, and these tasks?
For selectmen.
So is there, there's, is there not some particular department or person in, in town staff that's been told to, you know, visit the cemeteries, inspect them periodically? Make a, make a capital plan for improvements or, or what's needed or oversight of the contractors? There hasn't been anybody delegated to that task?
We, what we've done, buildings and grounds has done part of that. done part of that, yeah, like improving repairs on the walls and, and those visual things. I think it goes a little bit beyond that.
But and, is that been done on just an ad hoc basis, or has there been somebody who's been given as part of their job description?
That's basically, they were, and, and their job was not, as I recall, well, let me, let's, let's just historically, their job was to fix what may be broken and, 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 and need repair. We, I don't recall a, a situation where we were ever given a a charge of examining this, they come back to the board with some recommendations of, to do an overall improvement, other than just doing maintenance repair.
Because my sense was that these were private cemeteries that the town took over.
Right.
And when the town took them over, you know, the town then accepted responsibility for this task.
Correct.
And so to me, if, whether it was Herrick Park or a cemetery, if the town is responsible for a piece of property and operating that piece of, that facility, then the town should have somebody, you know, designated to be responsible for a list of tasks and held to account for that list of tasks. So if that should happen respective of whether we have a cemetery committee, because, or commission, because the town has that ultimate obligation, if we took over those cemeteries, we made a promise to the families whose loved ones are there, that we would maintain them just as we maintain a school, or we maintain hopefully a park, or any other public good that we have for our citizens. So I would like to be clear as to what the town's gonna do before I create a group of volunteers and give them the rather frustrating task of making that situation better, because they won't know what their authority is, or what, who to go to to say, we think this, I mean, they can come to us and say, we want the town to do these things, and that's fine. But if we haven't identified the person who's then gonna ta- carry out that task, or the, the job that then, that's then gonna carry out those tasks, how, how does that work for them?
Well, it's a good, a good question, I think, and it would be dependent on what the recommendation was. So if it is, say, signage, there should be an entrance and an exit sign, so you don't get the bottleneck, which if the people don't think it's a Catholic cemetery, of the Bolton Center Cemetery, that there's a sign that hangs, and what would be appropriate, perhaps in, that discussion would be brought up with the historical society as to what would be appropriate for signage. I think it could be rather broad, but we would ask them to report back to us with their recommendations, maybe on a quarterly basis and, or a half-year basis, and, and we could then review it as a board and decide as you're, I think, well pointing out, but department would take this over, and under Jim's leadership, he could direct it.
Except the, by doing it with town staff, Jim, for example, or John Potromovich, or a member of his staff, when an issue comes to bear, he can just handle it. He, he has the personnel and the budget to go ahead and take care of a situation and then request a transfer from the Cemetery Association to his budget to replenish the money. A good example is the flagpole. You know, the, the commission would say, yes, we need a flagpole, and then they'd have to come to us, and we'd have to do this, 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 and this, where they could just, if John was in charge of it and determined that it needed a new flagpole, John could just make it happen. And, and, you know, if, if you want to have a commission to, to make recommendations over and above that, yeah, but I think, I think town staff should be charged with maintaining that, utilizing private contractors and staff to make things happen on a timely fashion, as opposed to three months or four months where people will get upset. You know, it's, it's very easy for, you know, if Jim gets a complaint, to call John into the office and say, make it happen, where not so much if you're dealing with a commission.
Well, the commission couldn't.
The commission would not be doing that.
Right. That's what I mean, John, you know, if, if Jim took a complaint from a citizen who said a, a stone was knocked over, or this happened, or we needed this, we needed that, Jim could pick up the phone, say, John, I've got a problem, make it, make it go away. And John has the personnel, the budget, and the ability to make it go away, and in a timely fashion. As it would, as it would if we had a light out at Herrick Park. If we had a commission to study Herrick Park every three months, and the lights on the ball field were out, they'd come to us, we'd go to somebody else, where John, being in charge of it, he'll just make a new light bulb appear. And, you know, I, I think this is kind of the same thing. You know, I, I, i- if we want to have a commission to oversee the, the future of the cemeteries and where they go, that might be appropriate, but I think on a daily basis, who should maintain it, who should be responsible for it, I think it's the park department.
I, I concur with that, Mike, I think you, you make excellent points on, on ma- maintenance. We have unfortunately a past history of it being put out to bid, it was out with a private, private contractor, and then the town just sort of has sat back, because we have, I will, I believe, we have a very competent staff, and I believe that we are short-staffed in a couple of places right now for certain reasons, and that they are stretched thin. I just think that to have a few, few set of eyes on this hallowed ground right now, after what we've heard, and what has happened and been reported back over the past couple of years, I think would be respectful to our residents and to those that are buried in our cemeteries.
But don't forget, we never charged the park department with maintenance of it. We, we hired a private contractor, and we really ne- never gave any oversight to it. John is, and his crew is perfectly capable of zinging through there once a week after the maintenance is done, and taking a quick peek to be sure things are done correctly. I think we give him the oversight and, and see how it goes, and, and, and hold him responsible, hold the park department responsible for, you know, calling the contractor to task and doing what's necessary. I, I, you know, there, there's times for volunteer people to oversee things, but volunteer people can't direct town staff to fix an immediate issue, and.
Correct on that, it would be, it would be expected that the commission would come back and report back to the board, and we would make sure that it goes to our administration to get them.
Right, but, but we meet on a, we meet on a monthly basis, and I, I, I'm sorry, but I'm just a firm believer that if, if we charge John and his staff with overseeing and make sure, making sure that this is taken care of, and that the people meet the terms of the contract, I, I think that's the way to go.
Well, I, I would disagree with that, because we do not have a good track record as a, a selectman, or as in the administration, in taking care of the cemetery. And I think we just, it's time to ask for people to step forward, I know we have some people that are very interested already, because they've been brought forward the items to, to the, to the board. So I respectfully disagree. Would other members like to join in on the conversation?
Since I've been looking at this thing, trying to figure out how to make it, how to make it work, I think, I think we all want, we all want the same goal, so one modification of the chairman of your committee would be, I would, at least, if, until we can get this thing going, is make that a part of our, our Building and Grounds Subcommittee with those volunteers meeting with us initially, and then making them a part of our group that makes suggestions for the, for, for the whole, for the whole board.
Do we have a building, you're talking about the property and facilities?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
That's, I'm sorry.
That's right, that's right, make sure I'm talking the same thing.
I've changed it a couple of times.
Adam?
Well, I, number one, there's a, I, I, hopefully there are volunteers who would be willing to be on such committee, but I, I hesitate to make use of people who I think are just gonna be frustrated by the outcome. So I really, I think that I have no objection to a committee that's created for the purposes of making recommendations to us on how the cemeteries should be managed, what improvements might be considered there, how they could be overseen by the town. But I really do feel like, as I think Mike, I think Mike and I are basically in agreement, that, that if the town took them over as a public facility, then we should be dealing with them the way we deal with other public facilities, like our parks, schools, playgrounds, et cetera, and that that's our obligation, and we should have a person or a department that is responsible for that as one of its obligations for that standard and accountability. And asking members of the public to be involved in that as, you know, a group of interested people that say, here's what we would like, here's what we'd like to do, would we like to have a wall, would we like to have a flagpole, would we like to have other things, sure. But that's just advisory to either us or the parks department. That's not no decisional, it's not necessarily going out and researching costs or anything like that, that's just, here's what we as people who make use of the cemetery would like to see at the cemetery, or cemeteries, and as again, as somebody who has a loved one, and one of them, I, I feel this deeply, but we all, I, I don't want to mix what's the, what's the town's obligation and what's the public's.
I don't think.
Bob DePietro?
I'm sorry, I, I can't see.
Bob, do you want it?
Hey, Mike, I'm sorry, I tend to agree with Mike and Adam. And I appreciate what you said about the fact that they may be already stretched thin, but in all my working for public industry, no time did any boss of mine ever say, we're not gonna give you additional responsibility, because we know you're already stretched thin. That's too bad, Bob, take it and do it. I hope they said, do it. So I appreciate what you say, and I love the group that is in building the grounds, but this is a case where I think Mike and Adam have the right idea. Thank you, sorry. Peace.
I will say that this, you know, does happen to some degree, but not really, you know, as a charge from administration or the Board of Selectmen, when, when there's an issue that arises at one of the cemeteries, mo- most often, it is John and his group that, you know, are tasked with, you know, taking care of that. Is town staff currently checking the cemeteries on a regular basis? No, that's certainly something that is, I, I think a great idea, that we task, and I think appropriately, the Buildings and Grounds Group to do that. But for instance, when the, when the tree came down on the fence at, at the cemetery during Storm ICE, it was John and his team that were given the task of getting the fence repaired. When an automobile hit the stone wall in front of that same cemetery, you know, it was John's group that was tasked with getting an estimate for the repair of a fall, and eventually making sure the wall got repaired. So I, I think that happens to some degree, but perhaps not really as a charge, like you put it, Mike, for a particular department, or individual, or group of individuals.
In other towns, they have park beautification committees that are outside of the town, they, they fall under the town, but they are in addition to what the maintenance people do and that type of thing. I see this in sort of that same light, but I will defer to, to four out of five of us, and I would ask that since Mr. Moore and Mr. Teller are now on the properties and facilities, that you convene, and I can give you a list of names of people who are interested in talking about the cemeteries with you, and ask that you convene a meeting and, and ask them to bring forward ideas, or meet a couple of times with them, or perhaps even walk the cemeteries as a subcommittee with some of these people who are, have an interest in, in the beautification and the respect that, that needs to go forward for our cemeteries.
I think we have to have it, an avenue for, for folks to do that, oh, that's a good, that's a good avenue.
Is there consensus?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, then we'll move on to the veterans' commit, committee. Now, Mike, you brought that up, and you had a different feeling on that, do you want to address that?
Well, it, it, you know, normally, a, a good example is on Memorial Day, the veterans are out putting flags on the veterans' graves and things like that, and, and they tend to look after themselves, if you know what I'm getting at, and make sure that things are done for the people that deserve that honor. And, you know, I, I think the same thing, the parks department needs to be charged with certain things, whether it be the veterans' committee saying that, you know, we, we didn't get stanchions enough for this year, and you need to buy us more. But, you know, the veterans are a it's, I, I won't say it's a different group, but I, they have different concerns, and once again, I think the, the park department needs to oversee the maintenance of all of that, cleaning up the, 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 the flags at a certain time of year, and making sure they're destroyed properly, and, and making sure that each flag, each grave identified by the veterans' committee gets a stanchion. So that, you know, they're an advisory committee, as I would think the other one is going to be utilizing town staff to, to make sure that the things get happened, get taken care of.
There are two, I, I'm sorry, Bob, go ahead.
I can't disagree.
Bob Moore?
I, I, Mike, you, you, you're covering only one small aspect of that issue, because we really don't have a, an, an organization that deals with quote veterans issues per se. It goes beyond simply that, you know, the service that we have here at, at the park. It really, it really goes on to, gets on to what as a community we can do to, to with, with our, our veterans, and I think.
Bob, I, I don't mean to.
I don't, I, I'm, I'm sorry.
I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I, I get where you're going, that this is a much bigger picture than just the cemeteries, and, you know, because there's a lot of other Veterans Affairs things that should be taken care of in town, and I agree completely with what you're saying.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I know, like, you, you were just an aspect of it, and, and there are, there are issues that go beyond that, and you know, right now, we are, the memorials we have here have sort of evolved over a period of time to different groups. We never had a group per se of veterans dealing with with that particular issues, various memorials or whatever, for, for current veterans and future veterans. I mean, it's, you know, war is never gonna stop, I hate to say it, but it isn't. You know, war is never going to stop. I hate to say it, but it isn't. And, and our, our, our veterans, though we may be depleting as far as we're shrinking, but, but. We still, we still have people serving in the military. We're still going to have people serving throughout, throughout the world and. Unfortunately, they're going to be serving in combat. And. That's just one aspect of, of, of veteran affairs. And just like any other group of people. There may be, for some, there's zero needs. There's others, there's significant needs and, and just providing. A, a group or, or an agency that they can go to. Made up of men and women who can understand what their issues are and, and, and can relate to them. I think it's important. And quite frankly, I think every community should have that. And unfortunately, I wish myself, I. Would have done that in the past, but I haven't. I think is an opportunity to do that. I, I very much. Am in favor of creating such an organization. I know at least a half and dozen people who, who, who would be. Very willing to, to serve on, on that type of, of, of a committee. Just initially get together and just review what. What we have, what we, what we, what we as a community might want or need. Or we as a community, veterans might say, hey, how about if we, we did this? In it, I don't, I don't think anybody's looking to be spending a whole lot of money or anything like that. I think a lot of it has to do with. Best utilizing what we have.
It's, it's a venue.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's not just the cemetery. This is a much broader topic that you're talking about.
I, I could certainly see, Bob, that there's a space. For a committee of people who do a number of tasks as a Veterans Affairs or Veterans Advisory. And, and I can see one thing would be to publicize resources and programs that the town already has. Another would be to advocate for things that are missing in town services or. And then of course, you know, the whole subject of memorials and honoring veterans is a very legitimate thing for. For us to have a committee to do. So I just would like, if we do have a Veterans Affairs Committee, I'd like to have it. Have some identification of those kinds of topics that this is what we're asking you to do. And not duplicate things that are available either by town services or, I mean, if it's. If it's outreach to make people aware of what the town has, that's a very helpful thing because town staff doesn't necessarily have time. As much time to do that. If it's just a place to, you know, talk about how veterans can be better honored and. And, and helps. That's also helpful. I just, again, I, when we create committees like this, I don't like to fuzz what. The town is doing as a government entity and what we're asking citizens to do as volunteers because. These sort of ad hoc committees become, you know, it, they, they really are dependent on how much. Energy and leadership the volunteers have. And it flags very quickly if they don't have a clear understanding of what they're supposed to be doing.
What their mission is.
Versus what the town staff or frankly, state staff or federal staff. We have a Veterans Administration, we have Veterans Affairs. You, you know, at the state level, there are many, many programs for veterans. That are funded. And these are volunteers and I don't like to. Absolutely, if there are people, and I'm sure you know them, who are interested in both helping other veterans, but also. Making sure the town is doing the right thing by its veterans. That's very helpful to us.
I do, and I think, you know, not looking, you know, be all, be quite candid, not looking for. Ourselves today, we're looking forward to the, to the future for the men and women who, you know, come after us.
Right.
And, and I, I think, but you make, you have been able to put forward in a few words when I stumbled through in the last. Five minutes. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I, I, I agree completely with that.
I, I'd love to see a group of committed veterans and, and their associate, associated people who are associated. Who would be able to help the town do outreach or publicize what is available. I mean, even just as little as, you know, tax abavements and. And other things.
All right, so let's, I, it sounds like we have consensus on, on this committee for. A veterans group to be formed for veterans committee. Can we have a discussion now as to how many people you think would make a. Workable committee?
I have no.
Three, three to five tops.
What you get?
No more than five.
Pardon me?
No more than five.
Right, right.
Is there agreement on five? All right, then let's take, I would entertain a motion for a Veterans Committee to be made up of. No more than five members at the present time. And we will say a, shall we say? A four-year committee. So it'd be. And it would be revisited in four years. Bob Pietro moves. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Bob Moore a second. Is there any further discussion?
Tim, I'd like you to comment.
I have had. A, a long married history of being a military wife. I have had the experiences of. From being in the General Assembly, being on the first Veterans Committee. Because we felt that the state was not doing enough to promote the needs of veterans. And we have found that we are extremely successful on a number of. Items for veterans in the state of Connecticut. When we were working with the. Almost happening Bolton 300th anniversary, one of the, one of the recommendations was to have. Some more small, small monuments added to our veterans corner out here on the green. To recognize the other wars, not necessarily with people's names on it, but to recognize. The dates of the Revolutionary War, the War of 1812, the French and Indian War, where we had soldiers and women who supported them. So that they all would be recognized, just not the few that wars that are mentioned on the stones that are presently there, that are very beautiful. And then we've had a recommendation from a neighbor that wanted this small piece of road out here on the edge of the town green to be called Veterans Way. So there were comments like that and, and. They also felt that it had been quite a change in, for the veterans since the. Elementary school had started Veterans Day celebration, which is the last two years have not been able to happen, but. It brought a lot of people together and was a very positive thing. So there was talk of having. You know, recognition on Memorial Day and Veterans Day as well. As the rest of the year, but also they were talking about possibly reaching out to social services. And to be able to, as Adam was describing, share some of the services with some of the people in town. Do you know that we have Soldier Sailors and Marines Fund that probably is not been accessed and things that. American Legion and the VFWs tend to do, that we don't have those in here in town. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
I would, I'm not sure, do we, when we create commissions or appointed commissions, do we have to do it by ordinance? As it's checking charter to make sure that we did.
Would you like to postpone until the next meeting and we will review that, we'll.
Are we creating a temporary?
Would be, wouldn't it be an ad hoc?
Commission.
Be a temporary commission ad hoc, but I think we're limited in length of time by the charter.
Right. Yeah, I was looking, I was trying to find that provision, just before we did anything that we might regret.
It might be eighteen months.
I can't find it though. That's what I was with the four-year thing.
I read it. I'm, I'm pretty sure I read that.
So we just make the motion that it, it follow the terms of the charter?
We could, but you know, that would get the, the committee or commission, whichever we decide to call it. Just up and running, it would just barely be up and running and go through a whole year cycle of events. And then suddenly they would be.
Well, I think you, I think you, I think you have, I think you have the ability to continue with.
Yeah, or, 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 or create a, after that, or create in the future, you can, you can then create it as a permanent to ordinance.
Would the board consider bringing this back on the January meeting and we'll have the answers to some of those questions. So that we're not, we can move on with the rest of the agenda tonight.
Sure.
I just can't find the section of the charter.
So on, on a consensus, we will move forward, we'll put this, we'll postpone this and have further discussion on the January meeting. Very good. The first selectman's report COVID-19. We know that in this region of Connecticut, we are in the red, Bolton Falls right in the red section for COVID. There have been, according to the school superintendent last week, there were five cases of. COVID in the schools up from three cases the week before. And discussing it with Mr. Miller. There, he believes there will be no changes in the near term from the governor or the Department of Public Health as to. What would be expected for the towns to put anything forward. And I believe there have been no new, fortunately, no new deaths added to the list. So. We have found in listening to the, a lot of the reports that most, many, many, many of the hospitalizations are. People who have gotten COVID who are not vaccinated. And I don't have anything else under other, I don't believe.
Can I just share something on the, under the COVID thing?
Mr. Moore?
The, the health district's latest report, they also did a, a chart of. Age groups and which particularly age groups were the ones that were, were part of this increase. And the lowest, the absolute lowest was, were those, and this is a percentage wise, were those seventy-five and over. Because they're virtually all back there. You run down that. The largest groups, where, where, where the sixteen, three, the twenty-four, that was one of the largest brackets right there. And then another one to thirty-five to some other, but it, it does go to show that. You know, those of us and virtually everyone. We're preaching to the choir that getting the vaccine, vaccine, getting the booster does work. It works successfully.
Thank you. The hour is getting late and we have a bit more to cover, plus the executive session. That's all right. Thank you for the comments on. Administrator, Administrator Officer's report put before us.
Yep, and I'm sorry that the folks that are on the, on the call virtually, don't have a, a copy in front of them, but. I, I think this will be pretty quick and certainly will entertain any questions that you have. So highlights for the last month, we, we just today, we closed out the FEMA reimbursement for storm ICE. We have received those funds, something in the area of seventy thousand dollars. We completed our submission for the CCM salary survey. We submitted both the EMPG and the Homeland Security Grants. Those are, those are recurring grants that we work on. And help fund our emergency management efforts. We completed our filing for the opioid settlement, which is. Something that the board had acted on back a couple of months ago. I've completed meetings with supervisors for reviews. We have collected all the capital budgets and we are working on compilation. We're actually going to use. Not only are we going to utilize town staff to put that together, but our, our student who was with us from UConn. As a member of the MPP growth program is actually going to, you know, not only continue to work on. The Fair Housing Plan, he is also going to get engaged in the budget process with us, which is something he was interested in doing. We're working to finalize the contracts as voted on by the Board of Selectmen for the cemetery, which are the landscape. Section services. Finalizing the lease with, the lease for the farm. We've extended the land lease with Larry Pease. We've set up a town holiday gathering on the sixteenth. And I was asked to remind the Board of Selectmen to please let us know if they will be attending that on the sixteenth. That is beginning around noon time at Georgina's. So if you could let me know before we break up tonight whether or not you'll be in attendance. We had the first meeting of the Diversity Commission, which has chosen a chair and they are, they've set a meeting schedule. The first meeting of the Temporary Building Commission will be next week. The tree lighting event was this last weekend, the stuff a cruiser was this last weekend. Fire department had a successful breakfast with Santa. All, all three of those things happened on Saturday and were wildly successful. Also happy to report that three of our staff, Kathy McCavanagh, Liz Waters and Carrie Concatelli have completed the requirements. For the certified municipal official through CCM. My participated in a meeting of the four town steering committee. We are working currently on planning for next year's MPP or MPA student. And we are working on the completion of the charter revision incorporating all of those things that were voted on by the public. Into a single document. Any questions, comments or concerns? I also have no other.
I would say that if you do, because of the late hour, would you mind contacting Jim in his office later in the week? Unless there's a pressing question right now. Thank you. We appreciate that very much. Is there anything else, Jim, that you need to add under?
No, I have no other.
Very much. And so at this part time, we have an executive session for the interim administrative officer agreement scheduled. So we would ask that those people other than the two board members to please thank you very much for being in attendance tonight. We will come back. After the executive session, we will reopen the meeting and we will. Have a vote and, or discussion in open session after we have the executive session.
Thank you, everyone. We're going to stop recording now.
We have to have a vote to go into.
Oh, Bob.
And you also have to specify who's going to be with it. You can't do it that way, Bob. You have to specify who's going to be in it. Are we inviting the interim?
So we, at this time, I would ask for a motion that we go into executive session and that. The first part of the executive session, we have the candidate interim administrative officer. Can I have a motion?
Sorry, I don't hear that. Madam, I knew that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing. A potential contract with the interim administrative officer. And that we invite into that executive session, Mr. Rupert.
Thank you, Mr. Teller. Do I have a second? Is there any discussion? On paper, say aye. Unanimous. Thank you, everybody.